And maintenance, the legislature. That is right. Our Doug, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings of life that this could begin to order the earth and in blessings with many things. We thank you for the opportunity to serve our community and we thank you, Lord, that tonight we'll deliberate every issue and we'll discuss and we'll kind of affection one to another. With all respect, we have on every issue that the wisdom of many heads will prevail on. We thank you for the joyous season that we're entering into and we ask still God to keep our communities safe and at the times of celebration be pleasant with each family and sacred. We pray for those that serve our nation and the uniform and around the world in any places protecting us tonight. We thank you for that. We ask for all these blessings tonight in the name of our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and just for liberty and justice for all.
You don't have a parking on the main street there. I'm sure so they'll be sure how much. Basically, it's not too expensive.
Anything further? I think it may be a printer, a print issue or an update issue. It's in the back.
No, it's right before.
Right before.
Right before.
It looks like somebody notices it.
I don't know why that's doing that. They've all got notices, but I don't know why. Sometimes it does say it, but I don't know why.
Yeah, I haven't seen it since the shit off. The other one said way up to 15.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if these notices mention that long, why they're still open. I saw that one that there are papers.
Yeah, they actually made them out here.
We were only, we did that pretty much.
Right, yeah. And see the one down there, what is it, three cents? No, it said 4.21. That's the last time she had a shit off, never seen it.
Yeah.
Because she's been paying on time since she just owes three cents. Yeah, I could have wrote that off, but it didn't.
Oh, fine.
Yeah, yeah, probably shouldn't have been on there. The other down there, fifty-three cent, you know, they're just.
And the first one, it's bill shut off a lot. Can you add them on there? Is like the link told you when they speak or something?
Yeah, it does.
Man, would you do that?
Well, yes, I can.
And that, what they pay the next bill, it will take that few cents or a hundred cents off.
That one, this was way back here, a big, big bill, and they're paying eighty dollars plus a month on that bill. But it's still, you can probably get a order.
There are. Don't we let me go away?
No, they don't have a way.
No.
It's a problem.
My house had, I think it's your panel.
Through by Christmas this day. And they had a little setback a couple days with this weather, but hopefully they'll, they'll come get it back together.
And maybe.
Nothing makes them over.
They hope that they're making it.
They have not made it before.
I entertain a motion. We've sent it in.
I make the motion.
Motion. Go ahead, your second.
My second.
My second. Any further discussion? Mark that.
Yes.
Mark it.
Yes. Yes.
Next item is, uh... We don't want to be attended audience. Uh, next item after that is unattended audience. Judy Carter. Judy Carter.
What I'm down there on the D. I'm on the D here. You want to go ahead and talk about it, ma'am?
Petition center.
I think she. Oh, okay. You want to wait for that?
Yeah, that's what I'm, your fault.
Swing like a death?
Yeah.
That's not different.
No, at least.
Okay, okay.
I think this is a book for college.
I go.
Okay. Next, quarter.
We want to have elections here. Our candidates are Albert Wayne Carter, Judy Dennis Carter, Paul Jerry Coleman, and Hope Janine Hicks. Elections, December thirteenth, hold up seven seven. The testing and sealing of the ballots and the equipment will be Monday at ten a.m. This rug will be down here to set up everything, test the equipment. So it'll be ten a.m. Monday morning. Our poll workers, the voters will be here at six thirty a.m. till seven p.m. or seven after one o'clock. Your animal patrol update.
I think you can, I can give the last part of what you said. Anyway, on the election, do you do absentees?
Yes, we got absentees. Did you read your work deal? It was a letter. We have absentees at the town hall. Yeah, we have absentees.
You have absentees. Do they have to come here and get them? Do they call you farm or what?
They can come and get them, or they can call it farm and we'll mail them on. At this point in time, it's not coming and getting it, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Your animal patrol update. I'm still working on that. Oh, sorry.
Well, when do the absentees have to be, do they have to be brought in before?
They have to be here by seven o'clock Tuesday night.
Okay, so I can spring a mother's.
They need to come here before seven or eight.
Yeah, I'll be here all day today. Not here. Yeah, I'm gonna work the polls.
Get a tape measure, make sure you.
He said she told me she'd have the line drawed out. Said the way behind you.
Code enforcement. You didn't get to the animal. Oh, I haven't got to that yet. I've got it most of the updated, but we've got quite a few that are registered. We've got a few still are not, but most of them are. But I had a full list. We take a back to camp again. You may send you send the letters that they have to. Code enforcement, I talked to the realty company. Well, we've noticed the large rent property is being cleaned up. The owners are pretty clean in it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Looks like they finished, I think, is that in two or three parcels now?
No, no, it's in one parcel altogether, and he's been notified of cleaning up the dog.
Okay, well, I think I saw something where there's might be an out of parcel, maybe this mess all been cleaned and that's been, they've been pulled out now for.
They're supposed to clean it both because it's, his property address is twenty-two forty-eight ninety through twenty-two fifty.
That's probably going to be two addresses on two parcels. He's planned to, planned to parcel.
We can get back at them.
We need to make sure the cost of the rest of that, you can bury it and sit the house in. Now, since somebody done the right away and said, oh, okay.
That right away was whenever Jimbo got our cousin, so he found a ball here.
So don't worry, you can sit around here, review this, just move and ice. Look like they're paying some things.
Yeah, they were truck backed up here the other day, taking some stuff out of there.
On the supermarket property I've been contacted with the realty company that's got it listed, which is Telleroo's, and on the Elmore property, Mr. Goodman just said that we, if we so desire, we can send him a letter. Tell him that if it's not within seventy days, the town will go in and clean it up and put a little on property. They have to notify the property owner and the tenant.
You said seventy days?
No, within ten days. That's up to y'all. Go on to do that one.
I ain't paid about three points in about what, two years?
I believe it takes once with the mother thing.
Yeah, we're looking at it about two years.
We started it in two thousand fifteen.
Twenty fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yeah, been going on and on for a long time.
I have ordered, and I gave her orders last month for all three D, and we decided to rework it. It hasn't been so long ago, but we said, I think the city of Shipley uses a border route, and we've tried to start that, you know, kind of carry the matter, but that's a, I think that they're able, and they can, rather than doing that, after they get that notice, it gets to be a fine, so much of that. And they're probably looking at getting so much coffee, making. We can move something. So that may be something to consider if we look at our appeals again or ask Mr. Goodman if there's a better way to play it worse, but, you know, the other day we're finding.
And we have the ability to find. If we want to go that route, we can do that also.
I don't know if we could find, but if it was bad, the worst good thing to do, if I was, I was going to find it.
We find the landowner. That's on the records we have, is the landowner.
Is our current ordinance allowed to do that?
It's not that simple, is it?
To have a fine?
I don't know. I totally agree.
I'm not the major. We've run just a couple of these for two years.
You want to give a little on the debt, I heard.
Well, what I was gonna make a suggestion, like Robert said, if it's a fine, you make in check with Mr. Goodman. If that fine means so much, maybe the property just defaults to the city. And then the city can sell it.
Yeah, most of this is not, like, empty lots. Most of this is like homes. I'm sure, you know, we don't have, I don't think we have an empty lot, except maybe they'll have store that. It's not empty lot, of course, but there'd be a lot to find before we've got that.
I says penalties here. It says violation of this article, judge constantly here, they missed a meter of the second degree punishment by the Sunday law statutes. Imposition of the penalty provided herein shall not prohibit the court from imposing civil penalties for violations of any provisions of this article, including but not limited to picking up litter or pouring other labor commensurate with the offense committed. You know, that doesn't give us any fine.
I didn't think I was going to read anything. I mean, you can amend it. I mean, I'll rework the ordinance later on and put that in there. Probably leave, when it says it constitutes misdemeanor, felony, something like that, and certainly I did do too good with God as longer than our previous minutes, so I'm trying to do that again tonight. But sometimes those statutes will have, will say, a penalty of extra dollars or extra days in jail or something like that, misdemeanor, misdemeanor for first degree, second degree, third degree, something like that. So if those things, if those things say that, if the statutes allows us to do it, but then I think you have a lot of, have a lot of charge. I have, I have a lot of charge for doing the proof communication.
I'd do it through, guarantee it through civil. And they might try to keep it with the attitude of it's been a mall community as a first level. You get larger and larger, it gets more complicated, what more turns it on. But y'all will rework that after the first year.
So what your terms is at the very end of the point that.
Should we wish to go, should we wish to go forward, we can go forward with getting, you know, the right of entry to, you know, the judge to declare right of entry that we can go in and clean it up? And, yeah, I think anything, we just want to go through a legal proceeding, you know, at this point.
I definitely think so. Definitely. We don't want to shed a crew in there and shock them and pull out.
Well, I think we can send a contractor, you know.
No, we need some of the official writing on it. What y'all getting, or you want to proceed?
Well, the thing about getting the lien is until the property sales. I don't know if they got links right away, but for once a week, sure. And I was working, until the property sales, the lien disappears.
Yeah, well, that's true, yeah.
It may be twenty-five years.
TD like me, you can't live that much longer, so.
I do have something. Let's move them to the, to your fans.
I can, no. I can get a copy of the receipt of those organs and let Jeff look at all the letters and see what we got. From when you go to this property then.
Do we want to, ever send that letter, ten days and five months? I'm not sure if there's a lot of certain things we've been, to be honest, we've started our third year.
Yeah, we've, we've really given us a bit over backwards many, many times with this particular one. And the problem is, when you get started on that particular one, it's going to be a very intensive thing without, you got a trailer out there that's fell down and you can see through it. There's steel freighters sitting there on wheels and cars not on wheels. If you don't, if you don't clean a haul of it, you need cleaning one of them. That's going to be an intensive thing.
And another thing is, once we, once we start, we got, and everybody's the same brothers.
That's right. Most people will go ahead and make a trial. That particular one. They'll move it around. When you threaten, they'll move it from here to over there.
That's it.
Yeah, about pretty much. He doesn't even have to go here, you know, or maybe halfway in between. Move it around so we can understand, same old colored car, he's moving all over the place.
We could go ahead and do that with them until if you change the ordinance later to finally, it basically gets the same, you know?
Or do y'all want to go forward with a, a letter given, ten days and then?
Then I'll be. I can tell. Yeah, I make the motion.
I have a motion that we go ahead and proceed with ten day notice and contact attorney for the legal document necessary. Go out here for a second.
My second.
My second. Any further discussion? Any movement?
Yes. Yes.
We, in your package, you have a petition for Ms. Judy Carter, and you have a map in there. What we did is pasture bank statement. First thing, pasture bank statement. Ms., please accept this as my petition to request closure of proportion of second avenue joining my property described in section twenty-five, number three, north, range fourteen west, lots five and six, block twenty-eight, and the east fifteen feet of Jackson Street, verb, via the water.
Fourth day.
It's in the back.
Fourth, in the back.
Right, pasture bank statement.
So Wood's got something to be, south side of that street.
Yes, sir.
And behind Judy is Benches.
First name, that's Johnny, so.
Yeah, just attached it behind her, probably at next to her. And then Marrows is behind that. And that probably Bob Lee's wood.
Yeah, Bob Lee's.
Gives a stable.
Is, is, that's not the age of the plant. That's just a train plant from the property.
Right, yes, yes.
So if I took it down Third Street and then Jackson Street, turn it all back, that's going to go out before we're paving it and then I pay it. If Third Street, the one up here, where it's going to make buildings.
Yeah, it goes all the way back to Bob Lee's property back there.
How far is that open? It's open to his property? Because, because the question is, and Judy, you may, may know as well, we start, we start closing it, we can't hang on anybody. But if I'm looking at this, if I'm looking at this ride, Ms. Jones and Mr. Wood, I said that's more like Ms. Jones, the Jones and the Wood, slaying.
With Bob Lee.
Uh, Mr. Lucas Jones, he actually got, no, no, it just would be saying, I'm thinking about the distance to get there. See, we close that street, if we close the, the petition, uh, we wouldn't cut off the access to, we could cut off access to Finch, Jones, and Wood. If we're not careful with the chart, closing anything else, we've got, we've got some pictures there. But if they come to Third Street, come this way to that property, Third Street's only, see, see, that, Third Street's only open. But they can take off this, they can take off that way to come, come over, and still, still reach their property. It'd make it just a little bit quicker to ever even come. See what I'm saying? Well, right now, the northeast half of whatever name that street is going to be when it does. It, you know, you call that coming in Third, in turn to be left. That's right. But at least the first, over a half of, you couldn't, you'd have to have twelve doors open if you get in there right now. If you went up that street, I don't even know what the name of that street is.
I don't know what that was up there. Lincoln or something like that.
In the next street. Yeah. Same thing, same thing. It's true. Third Avenue. I need to turn and look about closing heads and streets because of water and sewer. But this is one of those situations where, where all that big is lost, and what she's asking to close, you have water and sewer from some other way you have to, of course, it has to be. The Finch, the Finch property, it's certain a little bit, because we have to do none of water and sewer, then we got to move every, something about this way of wood boats and everything like that, but.
Well, some of, you know, some of that would cause we retain they ten or twenty foot easement, or they're two or.
Or they.
Future.
On the other end of.
Yeah, retain, retain, you know.
How, how, how wide?
Sixty foot.
Fifty foot?
Sixty.
Sixty foot.
And how far is water from the street to the swamp, to the edge of my property? In length, be sixty foot wide, how long?
A hundred, a hundred and eighty-five feet.
Sixty-five feet?
Hundred sixty-five feet.
And does that just go to the edge of the swamp?
That just goes to the back of your property. You got a hundred sixty-five down there.
Probably about where it's clear to now.
Yeah.
Freezer, whoever Finch is.
Yeah, for him this, you're, you're a hundred sixty-five foot deep, and then behind that is a fence, and here's a hundred fifty feet deep. I'm not sure what's that. I'm not sure what it's cut that way.
Is that my voice? And we're ready for, then who's over the block?
And just whatever size block, you know, you said three hundred by three hundred.
Oh, I didn't find it. We should probably give a look.
That's right.
It was kind of confusing that it's not, it's got, take already what we can see the Jackson Street after, and we abandoned some of that.
I didn't know it was front.
I think they're receiving.
Actually, could close the, he just closed the forty foot adjoining her property, leave a twenty foot there. She's only wanting to go to her property, there's three hundred sixty-five feet, and leave the rest out at sixty foot open. She's only wanting, you're only wanting to close the portion that's joining your property.
The total sixty feet?
Hundred sixty-five.
You said it was sixty, it's sixty foot wide.
Right.
And one hundred sixty-five deep.
And what I mean, you want, you want to load it whole, that, you know, sixty foot.
Well, if, if we would need to leave an easement for water and sewer for, for previous care, then forty feet would be.
I was going to say, what's the minimum that you could, if you, a work group, work with.
Yeah, we only got, we only got ten foot easement, probably, by line there.
You got the road plus ten feet or? I can't put a blue up from here.
They give you a hundred ninety feet, going right away to right away. Talk about north and south.
Yes.
Yeah, you got a hundred fifty in that.
Yes, sir.
Give you forty, it'd be a hundred ninety. I'm not sure I want to do that, that being a lot of, pretty good matter. I, I can go all the, the, well, we got, you know, I was one.
Yeah, I don't think we can do, Mason Hardin goes for those in behind, but if we can accommodate to get the house there.
Like you said, you can't go straight back.
The lane, it goes half and each floor, and it's going, it's just going to mess that up because ten feet of that forty feet's going, but then we keep, we keep the. If we, if we keep easement, then, then we have an abandoned up to the wood property, so. If we're going to dog up to, with all the forty feet, go to you.
She's asking.
You got to have a, the, when you divide a street, you put a street, half of it goes to this one property, or you pack that. But when I'm closing the whole street, we keep twenty feet. That means that the whole forty would go to you, I think.
Well, that's the way we did it with, down where his mom was living. He just gave her a.
We took, we took from the middle, y'all gave us from the middle of Glean.
We closed half.
South.
And the other's still open.
And though it's still open, because you had, you had a right away all the way through. But what I was going to say, Bob, generally, so, in surveying years ago, you can take and either bring up, take and give her the easement, or come to the middle like y'all did us and leave. You need to want to give you a sufficient right of way. I don't exactly have that with effect, what they're wanting to watch. Just came to the middle and come out.
Part of, not, not the whole thing, get part of, and you can't do that.
And you can't build an easement.
Yeah, we just need to, to now, we need his action to advertise the first.
That's the way ours is wrote up. You can't, we can't build anything there, even though there was pre-existing, matter of fact, two feet of our house is set, taken both the sheds, which eventually come down when we realized it was actually sitting over there. And y'all accommodated us in that behalf, but we can't build anything any further.
Part of, not, not the whole thing, get part of it, and you can't do that, you just have to...
And you can't build an easement.
Yeah, we just need to, to now, we need his action to advertise the first part.
That's the way ours is wrote, if you can't, we can't build anything there even though there was pre-existing. Matter of fact, two feet of our house is set, taken both the sheds.
Yeah.
Which eventually come down when we realized that it was actually sitting over there.
Yeah.
And y'all accommodated just in that behalf, but we can't build anything any further.
I can see what his been, but, I mean, but the thing about it, if you just keep twenty feet. And then, uh, and then Bobbely decided, well, I won't, I won't close that street. Close it, just don't give it twenty feet.
That's not right. That's not right.
Well, I know, but...
I think he should be notified.
I'll probably don't have to notify.
And they have a chance to come, he has a chance.
Yeah, we sent a letter to all of Jordan and Brock Jones that his petition has been and is going for advertisement by the town to abandon forty feet of Second Avenue adjoining those lots that she's got.
And, and you make a motion to advertise this before you notify them?
We have to, we have to advertise and notify at the same time.
Yeah. If they're going to be notified, there's nothing going on. There's nothing going on to...
And I know before, it was with the church, it was that and advertised, made that so that we'd get, we'd don't let this, we'd come, no, it's, it's a lot here. But nobody kind of are, are going to...
Told us that no, and it's been defensive, and we can vote no, or we think it's the right thing, we can vote. I mean, the public here says that we hear what?
The public has to say, and they're joining the property.
And the property owner.
All are joining the property, I want to be sent a certified letter that it's petition and a copy of her petition. Now, she's requesting his...
But we can't, there'll be one that, for that public here, we can't, we can't, even if that's first part of the ninety, so we should put them here.
Yeah, the motion to have five public here and notify them.
So, at the public hearing, if somebody can do the twenty, forty split and send this, just so thirty, thirty, would that be part of the public hearing?
Don't worry about your public hearing. And then you close the whole tree, then the thing's what we're trying to do. And...
Well, that's, and... Number one, I'm saying is if somebody said, well, you know, like, he's kind of not written out there, we usually, well, we can close for thirty feet instead of closing forty feet. Or, or like, if there is, look, we could get by, honestly, I'm just trying to get a compromise here ahead of time.
Yeah. We're thinking about fairness and getting time, thinking about maybe we close thirty, forty feet now, and then later on, she wouldn't just close the other thirty feet, and you say, no, we're going to do that for our easement. Is that even fair to them?
Uh, yeah.
Because then we'd be, you know?
Yeah, it has to be a third one, like, I guess. We got, if there's, uh, something like this, you've got to do it on an individual basis. It's not one thing you could just go, one, shoot it off, or whatever it is.
Sir. I'm, well, I don't know, someplace out here, the seed is put, put all of the, all of the blocks. Do you know on the corner across there, do you know where your property literally comes to now?
An exact spot?
No, I, I don't know exactly where.
Yeah, because I don't know that this street is, we can't use that necessarily, we probably might be doing all on one side of the right of way. That way or this way, so I don't know, if our fence is anywhere near our corner.
Our corner, the corner of Jackson is inside there.
Yeah, it's got to sit inside a fence, can't, the fence has got to sit sixteen, is, uh... I think inside a corner.
So, about, about, you see somebody, well, that's, that's mine. If that, if the end of that fence is about on our line, then we know that you're not straight across is where Mr. Wood starts this way and the street starts that way.
Yeah, I think that's right, that's where the light pole is out there, corner, be, right at the corner.
But it's not been surveyed?
No. Not that I know of.
If I'm not mistaken, that, that be kind of what it would be in trees right there, at the corner? I believe.
Wow, across the street here?
Yeah. Yeah, and across over there in one place? We, we found some wood stuff up around that. I think there's that marker, it's right under that wood stuff.
I know one thing about...
So, you're going to come forty feet from that, how, for that home, how many way are you going to come, would you this way? And then, I think that's where it's at.
I was, uh... Before I did anything about building anything, I would definitely have it surveyed, and I'll tell you from the prayer of spirit, you better help the marker down.
You guys, the, the bank, they got that, that's the bank. Yeah. You'll have to have a survey, we believe, talk to you about the town.
I'd rather see that prior to...
You'll probably have to pull off a survey.
There's not, but ain't our opinion though, really, before that goes. It don't give you, I don't worry about it.
You didn't, you tried a church today?
You want to use them?
They paid for the S guy's, they, they, they do, you know, the, the, uh, the, uh, the reason they want to make that some marker in there. And, of course, that happened, and then I, it was, it was like...
Yeah, I knew you don't have that survey, but that, that leave up on that hill, if you had, you had never surveyed if you're one that joined your property.
That's right. That's right.
And give it some better eyeballs on killing on, because like I said, that's the real, that's the lot, and then somebody, when it stepped it off, it was not even the same ballpark we're talking about here.
And you know, it just, I...
So, you realize, as you saw, if we do it, that, that definitely didn't happen a month from now, and when did you get it? It is basically just, we make the ghost of the next state. In that, in that case, if you're ready for...
I, I'm gonna think of, we go to the next step.
Would you read it, please?
I will. Dear Mrs. Rudd, I'm writing as a follow-up to the letter you received from my secretary, Julia Davis. As Ms. Davis previously indicated, our records were searched and we were unable to locate any documents relating to the investigation of the Wausau Volunteer Fire Department and/or the Volunteer Fire Chief Sam Rudd. I have discussed this matter with Investigator Ricky Carl Carlton, who actually conducted the, as you mentioned, investigation. Per investigation, Carlton alleged allegations of the theft or main relation to the Wausau Volunteer Fire Department. The investigation revealed that Mr. Rudd had given $6,170.09 in fire department funds to pay for personal cellphone services. Mr. Rudd agreed to and did make restitution of that amount. As a result, criminal charges were not pursued. Additional allegations were made in regards to the theft of funds in retaliation in relation to fuel purchases by fire department personnel. Due to the procedures that were in place during the time the alleged theft took place, the state was unable to sustain which person or persons may have made the unauthorized fuel purchases. Please contact me if I may be of further assistance. Sincerely, Sheldon P. Jeffco, Assistant State Attorney. So that's for y'all's information for clarification of last night.
Do we need to make a motion to put that in?
I just want to ask, everything is part of this, everything is part of this in general, kind of part of the record.
Yes.
But there's also the, the deepness of what's going on now, or what in the future, do we need to accept that security is a part of...
Accepting the record.
I would like to.
I made a motion to accept the letter for the photograph.
I have a motion, we accept the letter for photograph. Go, your second.
I second.
I have a second. Any photos present? Are you open, Paul?
Yes.
About that morning?
Yes.
Yes, sir, yes, yes.
Okay. As y'all are aware, Ms. Joyce Carr, that owns the property, owning all of this place, her mom's own estate, Ms. Darcy, has, as she said she would do when she inherited the property, that if she ever got ready to sell, the city would get the first option to buy that property. I was asked by Mary Phillips to pursue with Capital City Bank a loan for this property. Her asking price, and what she's had an offer on, is $90,000. Capital City Bank is willing to make us a loan on that at 3.26 percent, which is the taxes they're funding, you know? The contingent of that is that we acknowledge that when 77, we get the money from the government nation proceeding from 77, that would go towards your principal loan. This is a 10-year, right, it's 10-year amortization schedule. Our payments will be little less than $1,000 a month on this. At 18 months from this funding date, when we get our money from DOT, the loan will be restructured at a lower payment over the remainder of 10 years. Anything we get from DOT for condemnation, you know, will be applied to the principal of the loan. But Ms. Carr gave us an ultimatum not to make a decision if we wanted to enter into a contract with her to purchase the property, but we had to be continued at all Capital City being able to loan us the money for that.
She agreed to that.
Agreed to that.
And we have $1,000 a month to turn on the deed?
Yes, sir.
That was my first question. That was my first question.
It's the only opportunity we're going to get.
This is an obligation. We've been served grants already, we've gotten some places for fire department, other things, libraries. I think this is an obligation.
I'm talking about that, that fire department there and, and a library accommodation maybe, you know?
Or town hall, and that this big library, and the meat hall.
Well, they've all come, but this is a one-time deal.
It could be a one-time meeting center.
This is a one-time deal out here. I can be after, this week, if you don't go somewhere.
I think this is great.
If I can go to us, come to somebody else. And I feel sure I know who it is, but, you know.
I feel that's church.
Both like, your, 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 your.
But they, it's my understanding from Ms. Carr that the church paid $90,000 from this big property, and that they were willing to pay, match that amount to her for the rest of that property.
But she agreed to give us...
Of course, I'll change it, yes.
If we don't make the option, it goes to the church, it's sitting there already. So, I'm just going to leave it up. As they know, put no pressure on anybody.
They should have worn down wheels. I think we ought to. I think we should exercise the option on the, on the fire property, according to terms it's been presumed was to that.
I have a motion that we go forward with this. Your second?
I second.
I have a second. Any photos present? Are you open, Bernie?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and also, we need a separate motion to authorize the mayor to enter into the execution of the loan documents with Capital City Bank. When they enter the contract with Ms. Carr, are we to put that on the same motion?
If we do, we'll have a follow-up motion, so.
Okay.
I'm in that motion, if you want to be in here, second. That motion, you give it.
Yes.
Off the motion, might not be made for that matter.
Yes.
That'll do it.
Second, okay.
You have something you want to say?
Yeah, I just, I want to ask, I know it's concerning this lot here, but how much of that lot is?
Half.
Half of it?
It's half, half of it.
It's half that whole block?
No, I mean, east and west is cut right in half.
Okay. I was just curious, and no big legal thing in this.
150 feet.
Good deal.
And supposedly, the state's going to give 31 and a half feet of that 150 feet. So, we can, kind of, look a good deal, maybe we can get most of it, I mean, a lot, big chunk.
Here, here.
Well, I mean, there's an operating, big detail. To move the deposit, we're going to have to move it off our property. But it's not, I mean, so it belongs to us now.
Yeah.
To the deed, right there. They're going to have to buy that from us. We can really say that's a very important part of that.
It's, 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 it's...
And those big, big old trees out there are very important.
Yes, and everything, very, very, very important.
It's very important.
What you said, it is very important.
Before we moved that monument.
It's part of this property.
I wouldn't suggest moving, I mean, here again, that's just, just move the land we're going to buy.
They're right up, they're going to build it there, that's, that sounds good to me.
And even if they're all side well, if it's, if we get too close to where we're going to build a fire station, what are they going to do, build it up, do it up?
Yeah, just don't want to take it to the deposit palace.
No, I don't, there are too many people in love with this one coming through town.
That tree was decided on the first fundings.
Yeah. Well, that's kind of...
Maybe we need to bury it.
Don't push it too much, you're going to get so many. Push it too much.
At least, at least half of it, I'm sure, at least half of it, exactly.
Bobby Jeffco, we give the state transplant the dig up, along with Washington, along with the monument, this is, we need that for the deposit.
After she left, we go beautiful, and run this, 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 man.
Oh, heartbreaking, heartbreaking.
Every time.
Brands worship memorial, living right there.
Yeah.
So, can they call it green, yeah, yeah, sweet with that?
Yeah. Let's see. Okay, that's, that's all for you.
Yes, sir.
All I have is a Christmas policy for employees. We normally give our, normal employees $200, and they, and they call, and I've suggested it's, for one year, we give James a $350,000, we can beat his normal paycheck.
Month.
I mean...
And he is at a month, that's total thing? He's total.
What?
Actually, it's a month. James Allen, yeah. Well, I said, yeah, you're not, we're doing a month.
Yeah, so about that a month. And if that would be okay with us, now, I said, if you're a mentor, if you want to be different, say now. Does anybody have any objection to giving one a month's pay?
And the, the other important, you're getting two months?
Two months. So, the employee gets bigger checks there during the year, you know?
Or he would get, no offense, but, and be half that much, a hundred, to, to what they get.
Well, it wasn't bigger, but...
They're here every day. I know he puts in a lot, but I think...
Well, he does a lot.
Close space. You going to turn to Bernie?
Oh, you said $200,000?
That motion, so you, is that a motion?
Yes, we're, we're...
They give you two dollars.
He's offering $200 the first day.
I have a motion, second, any photos present?
He's on Tuesday, Thursday.
Bernie?
No.
I do all the rooms for free, so I see, who is?
Are you?
Mayor Brad Damm, Bernie Palmer. Remember, I think...
Yes, I do, yes, I do.
Okay.
That trailer that was down there, huh, where Johnny was living, which is pulled out there, is it in there? Camper? Yeah, camper. I don't know if I can check on that, man.
Has it been walked out?
It's just right there by Southern Road, was the eyesore. And then somebody told me that that trailer, camper, what it is, down below. Oh, that one that's in front of Jimbo's house there, is that the one you're talking about? No, I'm talking about the one... Down there by Travis's house, just before Kim's. There's two of them down there. Oh, two of them down there? One that where Johnny lived, it was behind his house.
Yeah.
It was pulled out to the road.
Yeah, they put it back in there, and that's the end of the street now, maybe on Town Street.
What, 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 do you guys want to do with that camper, just leave it plain there?
No, that's...
It's a rated, it needs to be moved, is that on the road? Yes.
I think it's in the street, take it through.
It's in the street with him?
Yes, it's an extension of it.
Well, I think Jimbo pulled it up there.
No, I don't think.
Oh, I don't think?
I hope that is.
From behind Johnny's house, right there. No, I don't think that is, but I do, okay. And then that other trailer down below the, the, somewhere right, somebody said they were doing some raw sewage going out there.
Somewhere there?
Yep. There's a bunch of people in the mall, for another second.
Are they, are they helping?
As mayor of the house there.
I don't know.
You gave enough to place it off, or one made it again?
Is that, that made it probably a lot, didn't it?
No, they're just living there, they're...
Oh, yeah.
That camper was just pulled there. Yeah, I don't think the camper hooked the water, but I don't know, sewage...
Yeah, a lot of people have lived in a little house.
Oh, yeah, the camper, yeah, they didn't...
If they throw sewage in there, that's...
That probably, I can, I can call and help the problem and get him a check. It's right across from, George is, George.
And they should make, they should make an order, or, they should, they should...
Take it through.
All right, I'll take on.
You tell them.
I'll take, I'll take.
If we got it others somewhere around, we could help each other with it, if they want to change a lot of power to, or, maybe they made it, maybe they said nicely.
Oh, man.
I heard about it.
They got one of the red, yeah.
It's further behind the...
Week. Kind of briefly heard by a waiter, and it's in there, still in there behind Johnny's, you know?
Put the cigarette.
Probably a waiter blowing somebody down the south, and he had a top, I mean, it's just a van, I mean, a driver, driver van.
That's a high profile.
Yeah. So, that's kind of pushing a whole, people doesn't even have a, even, anymore.
Yeah. But if it's on our street, if it's on our street...
Move the order.
I think we have an impound.
I can't, I don't know, I think you could.
I, I had a deal with that several years ago, with cars left on some property. We just called a tow truck, and they come haul them off, if they want to come get their cars, they were in the inbound yard of tow trucks.
That's why I say we can have them towed, and they can have...
And that way, they won't be on city property, they won't be built to the city, they'll be built to the owner of that, and they have to deal with the tow truck.
I think if I was...
You want to tow it on Southern Route?
Would it cost us half ton?
That would be, it'd be completely built to the person.
They could put it off the title.
Yeah, we could probably get the search department down, to flag it, if it's for towing.
Yeah, that's what you say, they'll flag it, and then they'll haul it off, and they pay for everything you ever owned, to haul it off, and I think, yeah, they're sorry this week. They're so long so much.
Give them, give them money. Give some of their money.
Okay. Anything else that follows?
That's all.
Scott, there you go.
Okay.
And Bernie?
Yes, sir.
I'm entering a motion, we have a...
Mr. Boggs, do it. Mr. Boggs, do it.
Better hurry it.
Dave, is that a here's also your name?
Yeah.
We was up at the deposit palace last week, and there's rainstorm. Most rooms got pretty much flooded. They've got to go, lock everything, get it cleaned up, get them back up there, yesterday.
Today.
Today. And one of the, the lower rooms, actually, the lower bathroom, is, so, everything that we put up is, so, we put up tomorrow, we'll take that out. I would really like to see, you, Mayor, we talked about it tonight, if we could just get behind the deposit palace and dig a ditch, lock that ditch, get that water over to the roof, I think we could solve a lot of the problem.
Because that water's back in that...
Yeah, that, it's not coming in from the top of the building. The upper side of the deposit palace, it built up so high, that water's coming from there, over next to the foot shit, it's running across the floor, and it's running in the back of the building, up under the tent.
Yeah, what, what would you take it, can you get it to that cove on the, can you get to the ditch on the west end of the cove? Because you want to dig, you want to dig that field, if you dig that field, that ditch, you got to get deeper for the field.
First of all, I would say, I'll call those kids in the ditch right there next to the fence, on the north side. On the north side, you know, so that...
And they'll put in the ditch.
Put it in the ditch, let it go down.
On the west end of that cove, because of the gap.
Just, and then, it'll cross the roof there, the bottom will go into the street. Come through on the...
You miss out a water line, there's a water line, I can make that happen.
I believe, if, if we work it out, I believe...
If you do that, if you do that, that, this is my first time with that, with that case.
Yeah, we just go, send it way back.
We go that, we go that, and I go, save the shit, and then wait a minute.
My account was aware, that was over time, that's going to be a primary issue, that's something that's going to come from the bank, and you should make sure the town can have continuity of that.
My deal is, we have a real problem with that, we are having a long getting on. I, I was at the, I saved the school up, I didn't go to, but, you know, the deposit palace, we got kids here, and I, I know we got some that want to mess up everything, but, you know, also, I'm there, one of us, and I think we would have to take care of the deposit.
Yeah.
You just play the, you know, play, you give the ball here.
I remember all dances.
Yes, it is, yes, it is. We just have to, yeah, kind of, do a little bit, and then maybe, like you said, maybe you're saying to do with a, a backup, but we have, we got...
We need, we think we need two grades.
Yeah, I think so.
I'm actually going to do it right, fire department nut, but, you know, if that's something that the city wants to tackle, don't let me know, I'll be more than there. I know they, they go far by right here. That, that deposit palace, you know, everyone knows who's...
Yeah.
I think, I think we need two grades, and do a rational, we...
I'd like to see, we might, we might, we might, yeah.
Are you near, is that an order for...
Don't worry, the...
We had to melt, no, I would just come, call you, that's it.
I thought that...
No, I'm just, I'm just going to ask, can we get a grant or something to, like, refurbish the deposit palace upgrade, and that be included?
Maybe.
I don't know.
We'll keep, we'll keep present, we, uh, grants, grants have kind of done this for ten years.
Oh, okay.
Like I told...
The economy, politics, kind of works.
Lock that to here, no more.
That's right. I, I even had a, a, eleven hour down there on the west side of the deposit palace, because it extends out like it's on the east side, and it extends over the cook shed. So, I, and somebody kind of put a, 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 and go in the ground and get away from that, wash it that hole, freed out there, the whole, dry, but, but that's been two years more, yeah. And we're just having that a grant, a little more, for that. I'm sure, when it come up, when it come up, you put a, you put us in for, but, uh, sorry, do?
I got one more question.
Okay.
And I know this is a long time. Good town, the fire department, development club, recreational park, we all get together over, we'll fundraise it, and see if we can get the door fixed.
That's...
The door on the, if you stand in front of the deposit, it's going to be on the right inside, if you move that door about three foot down, it comes off and over the top.
Somebody told me, I don't know who I'm talking with a fair amount of times, he's like, fix that, that's why I'm, I need a welder.
That would be.
I would like you.
But you, it's, it'll take one, it'll take one of welders out. I'm talking about, he's talking about the top, I was talking about the track to the bottom.
Well, the top, that's off, go it number, bottom, no likely.
You can take, we can take that bottom truck out, it's a $1,000 or at least.
Yeah.
Pick the most, you hold the truck.
The, 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 recreational park.
And, and, and it, I, it's a good idea, they don't need, they need to be the downside too. It's, it's the accounting of government funding. We have resources that come in, that we budget, and fundraising is not a, is not a way to fund, but, I'll, 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 the, the fire department, because you're a volunteer organization, and you have a special calendar here. And the development, now, if the development club, and you, if you, the fire department have the, have some kind of fundraising, submit those, then you should, the city, they become unanticipated revenue, then we can, then we can budget that and do what you're saying. We can all work together, but we got to make sure that we don't, that we don't, look like we're running the city government on fundraising.
Yeah. And I understand that part, but I think, Bob, you'll cook a few fish, you cook fish, no more than Ken, and I know the other two ladies will be more willing to help.
I'm retiring.
Have you any idea what's...
Personally, from our fundraisers, that we've done fish bras, we've always gotten fish, which cuts a lot of the cost.
How much do you know of the cost?
I go a lot.
I'm not 100% sure, I heard one bid, but that's been almost three, I live three years ago that we heard a bid, but you're probably looking between three and five thousand. He said, that's, that's one door.
That's the top, you come out, you come out, you come out, slide.
Okay, that was the most door.
You come out, slide.
Yeah. Is that, is that top or the bottom?
Yeah, that was fixed, and then...
If it's fixed, the bottom, would it help the top? No. The, 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 the right hand door is...
I think you want to take them down, you want to have a reef, frame them, and then you want to shut that down.
He said he could use jackass under, but, the way he was playing it up, was he could lift the door up, he's got fixed the top, then while he's got doors up, he's got to measure and, and tap and cut that damn break. Yeah.
And, 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 nothing's ever as easy as the same. I'm in favor of doing what you're saying, assuming you get to that high house garden, and we have to couple it out with quotes, because we get into professional services and things like that.
I'd look at the bid.
So, I wondered, I wondered if we could look at it, and I know he's going to, he's going to go towards a something, I wondered if he looked at it, engineer what needs to be fixed, and then we can submit it to some, to some, and get some real quotes, so, he could do that, make him all his data running, a, a grade on that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Put that in on, on the, on the backside of that.
I think that's probably, needs to be done.
Yeah, Ben, Ben needs to be done.
How much of Mr. Deposant Palace rented out? And how much is the fee?
Uh, if they rent the whole thing?
Like for a whole day, like, we have family, you can...
Fifty-three, fifty-four of the outside and the bathrooms, if you rent the roof, it's $80.
Okay, but how, how many weekends out of the year is that done? I'm saying, could that be a source of revenue to get the door fixed?
No, no, not really, not anymore.
By the one time, maybe it was thirty, thirty fundraising, you have forty weekends out of the year, or something.
Yeah, oh, you a lot up there for free, back there in the high school, weekends.
They got a bit of...
I just got one question concerning that, now, this is something I heard years ago, that the building was originally built off a federal grant, is that correct?
I'm sure.
Okay, somewhere, and I'll be glad to help research it, because, God knows, I had the time, if we can't get some kind of federal grant, if that's okay with everybody, just to research, I don't want to step over the line, and see if we can find a grant under the federal guidelines for refurbishing, and us get...
You don't charge us, Paul.
I ain't going to charge you nothing.
I don't see any objection, anybody can grant you, but I, I flew a sprint on that one, it was, it was a hand, walk through Congress, box side, Jerry, the hunt, the dog, the grant.
So, was it? Didn't she barely have anything to do yet?
It wasn't applied for, it was open processes, it was, it was dead, and, and, box side, I come back from the first, and the first one, they made it happy, we had a good coffee, and box side, it's the only place to have fun day, and first thing you do, we had, we had $50,000.
He swayed at that, that, that first fund day, he swayed riding on bike that first one, he didn't like it.
Hey, I remember, we were at the church, church.
And I was, and first rent that I worked on, I worked, I worked, I was...
So, you think it might be stirred up?
That's what we were doing, saying, says, if you look out, I don't see too, it would happen today.
Are we, uh...
Make your turn?
Yeah.
Almost, almost.
I bet you.
I think Bernie's going, going to do, this is last night, and I think she's a presentation, I think.
Okay. You want to come down?
Come down, yeah.
Oh, we, we'll probably need to get out for...
I was going to make a plan, they're calling this.
You don't know. I think everybody knows that, uh, uh, Ms. Lynn and Ms. Phillips chose not to go on by this year, this will be their last meet. We'll, we'll, you actually, you'll actually have to come up next week, but, uh, this may be the last one, we have, or, or, everybody, so, we're going, we recognize our service. First of all, thank the two of you for being as faithful as you have been, and lunch is probably being as new as anybody I've ever served, we is about watching the budget, and trying to do bearing, and things like that, trying to be conservative. And probably, especially, very, well, again, is innovative, and is active, I don't know that I've ever served with another major that was any more active in pursuing things that were on the table, you were...
And on the electrical work, and...
And all the work we did, and I appreciate that.
Can, does he come with you?